All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose?
I did a motion, but.
Okay, again, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have no unfinished business and no new business. We'll move on to council concerns. Councilman Henchy.
We did not have a public safety commission since the last time we had a meeting. Also, I'd like to say thank you to our city engineer, Kyle, Kyle Bremmer, and his team for, there was a sign that was knocked over by the kindergarten for a school's safety zone, and they got that up very quickly, and I appreciate that very much. And thank you. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilman West?
Okay, the Human Rights Commission met, attempted to meet, but the quorum was not met, so we just had a couple of general discussions about Juneteenth celebration for next year, trying to put a proposed budget together, and the Jane Beimer Fike Award, and the desire is to present that at a council meeting sometime in the future. From a concern perspective, there was an accident this past Sunday on Highway C, injury accident, and I know we've visited this in the past where we've talked about, we've got a warning light out there now, I don't remember, how long has it been there, maybe five or six years? Maybe ten years, I don't know, but time flies. But I know we had to deal with MoDOT, but I'm just wondering if we could have the Public Safety Commission talk about this and possibly put a stop sign in. I think a stop sign there would be calming like we have there at Wood and Z. Would, maybe speed reductions, that sort of thing. So, I know we'd have to work through the state, but might be time to talk about that again. Chief Ladwick is in here, I don't know if you have anything to add, but we've got, that's been a concern, I know then there's more and more houses being built out there and that sort of thing, so that's why I raise a concern. And your department, as well the fire department and the ambulance, all responded very, very, very well. So, thank you for that.
The accident on Sunday occurred fifty yards north of the intersection. Somebody was attempting to turn into the apartment complex and just failed to yield to the northbound traffic. That's actually been our first accident near that intersection so far in 2024. There were three accidents at that intersection in '23. You know, on the flip side of that, there's areas on North Bluff where we have a lot of accidents. A stop sign may help if MoDOT will agree to it, since there are more residential units being built down in that neighborhood. A lot of the accident reports that I do look at and review, a large majority of them are just an attention, people on their cell phones, not paying attention, playing with the radio when they rear in somebody or they just turn in front of someone. So, accidents happen. Unfortunately, that one wasn't as bad as what it could have been, but, you know, we do our best to try to get them to slow down through there. But it is that state speed limit of fifty miles an hour right through that intersection. Yep. Sure. I would have no qualms with reaching out to MoDOT to see what their opinions are. Okay? Okay.
Do you have, okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll refer that to the Safety Committee. And Kyle usually deals with MoDOTs, though. Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes, it's the same thing as Mike said, I live out there, there's thirty new homes being built. Yeah, it's carelessness is what it is. As far as the light goes, yeah, it took me two, it took me two years with MoDOT to get that light. Speed limit is fifty miles an hour, that's just ridiculous. You've got school buses, you've got over a hundred, over two hundred homes out there, so it's gonna be. And it definitely needs to be looked at, and I do, I do feel that we need to contact MoDOT, and if I can be involved, I will take care of that and try to help with that. And our Public Safety Commission does meet coming up in the next week and a half or so. I'm on that committee, and this will be discussed. And anything else that we need to bring forward for that, please let us know, or maybe we do have a schedule already. But I just want to thank everyone for being safe drivers as they possibly can. With school coming on, it's frightening. But let's all be careful, and that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stone?
Yes, we had a historic preservation meeting on Monday, and unfortunately, we've got two vacancies, and then we had somebody that was not able to attend. And with that, with two vacancies, if we have any one person that can't attend, then we don't have a quorum. So, I'm putting a call out there, anybody that's interested in Historic Preservation Commission, if you know anybody that might be interested, please spread the word. We're looking for applicants and volunteers for that commission. We were able to have, you know, we had a meeting, we had conversation, we discussed things that we're gonna be working on, we just weren't able to vote on anything. But we continue to work through the requirements of the CLG certification, and you're gonna see a few things brought forward here this fall for that. There's just some very specific things that we have to have documented, that way we can say we checked this box, we checked that box. Receiving CLG certification allows us to put that on any and all grant applications, and that carries a whole lot of weight for this type of work. So, we need to have the survey done of our historic homes, as well as the homes that may qualify for historic, and that's a heavy lift, it's a time burden. And then we've just got some other things that we need to do and some training that we need to have for ourselves and for others. That's everything with historic preservation. Just, please help us find some volunteers for that commission. The only concern that I have is I was reading through the minutes of the utility board, and noticed that the, and I know we need a deterrent, I know we need action, and I know it causes problems when people leave their waste receptacle out on the road, either too soon before their trash day or too long after their trash day. And it's complaint-driven, and we have some roads where it's just, you know, you might not be able to pass if you've got dumpsters on either side and they're out in the road. But I did notice that it's either been proposed or it's been adopted for a one warning and then a fine or a fee, however we wanted to find that for the second, just immediately for the second time. And I'm just, I'm curious about that, I'd like to hear more about the decision-making on that, and also to know whether or not that is just a proposal or if it has been passed for the utility board. And we don't have to have that discussion now, I just want the topic out there, and we can discuss it in whatever form is appropriate.
Okay, very good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like the last airport update was from last Wednesday. I haven't seen any updates since, but I believe runway eighteen thirty-six is still closed. It is open now, okay. That's awesome. But as always, continue to monitor our NOTAMs. But another big thing, especially for anyone out in the public, let's see, the rotating beacon that stood above the airfield for many years has been taken down, but will be up for public bidding on governmentdeals.com. So that might be a pretty cool piece of history and vintage material to get in your possession. So if you're interested, please keep an eye out on that. As far as other items, I know with the recent flooding, or years of flooding and stuff at the roundabout, it's really more for Kyle, just concerned on the roundabout, the concrete structure itself appears to be degrading probably quicker than it should be. Is there any plans to, whether that's MoDOT to come in and resurface, rework that roundabout and that area?
I'll check with MoDOT and see what their schedule is for. I know especially the center curbing and whatnot needs some good repairs, so I'll see if I can get them on that.
Awesome, thank you. We have no further items tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Combs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission has not met, we have a meeting later this month. In terms of concerns, I'll see if we could possibly check and see if we can open the trail by the Y in the high school again. I know it's been closed due to construction of the entrances over there, but with school starting next week, it looks like it's back ready to be used again. There are plenty of kids that normally would be using that trail, and there's just no sidewalks to the high school on either side. And so I know like this morning, I saw lots of kids walking in the road due to not having sidewalks or that trail open.
I think Kyle noted that. Okay, thank you. Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A park board meeting is coming up on the fifteenth, so we'll get more information on what's going on. But also want to make a mention that in Carver Park, they're gonna be having a few events going on. I think it's back-to-school supplies will be given out, and hot dogs and various things. They're trying to get things together at the community, the churches are coming together and trying to help the youth, talk to the youth, talk with people, try to communicate, get a better relationship with our community. So those things are taking place at Carver Park this, on the seventeenth, Saturday the seventeenth. So, just anybody's free to come along and see what's going on, and I know they welcome you to come and share and help and do whatever you can. Other than that, I have another group of concerns.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Utility Board has not met, we do have a meeting coming up at the end of the month. I want to say thank you to our street department and all of our staff that helped with the resurfacing on Westminster. It looks awesome. I also want to say thank you to the street department for getting the lines painted so quickly, the notifications when the road was gonna be closed, the big signs, it was really helpful, the post on Facebook. So thank you to our staff and crews that helped with that project. It looks great and it drives great, because I use it every day. No concerns.
Thank you. I might say that, if you'd noticed, Fourth Street, they didn't do such a great job on. And Kyle, you want to come back and tell us, I think they're gonna come back and redo that? They had a new guy or something, and?
Yes, we'll just be polite and say that the initial resurfacing will, there will be a final one that looks a lot better, so, yeah. For that matter, they will be back, it'll probably be later September by the time they make their way back here, but it will be resurfaced and repainted at that time.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, while Kyle's here, I forgot a question that I had for him. We had a pretty big accident at Bluff and Tenth, I guess it'd be Bluff and Tenth Street, a few months back, and there's still evidence of, you know, the painted lines and everything that needed for the law enforcement investigation. Is there any way to paint over those now if the investigation is complete and?
We could dull those out with black paint.
Yeah, just kind of cover them up, and we did a great job of making that really, really nice, and then, then we, we had to paint, we had to put all the lines and all the dots and all the dashes in it, but I didn't know if there's an opportunity to change it back to black.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can effort that, and I know that it pains our guys more than, more than anybody, because they're out there trying to block, when we were trying to block traffic all from, from when that Bluff Street was done, you know how painful that was for the community to not be able to use that thoroughfare and to see it.
Almost immediately, we had to mark it all up.
Right.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question. Oh, go ahead. I was gonna ask you what time that event is on Saturday? Eleven to three? Is that the same time as the Family Fun Day? I don't know, I don't remember. No. The Health Department, yeah, okay, thank you.
So the bid for the demolition project is scheduled for September nineteenth, so. Sep- September nineteenth, yeah. So, after, sometime after September nineteenth, we will, we'll see some action, so. It'll be a little bit yet, because it'll be the bidding process, we'll receive bids, and we'll have to go through those and then award, award to contractors, so.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, I want to echo what Councilman Stone said. We do need, we have a few openings yet, and mostly on, I think historic preservation, probably. I do have three people that are gonna be getting back with me and on some other board appointments that I hope to be making at the next meeting. So, but we do need, if you know of anybody, have them get in contact with me or fill out online, you can fill out an application, it's pretty simple. Most everybody has a computer now. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Councilman Henchy, would you read Bill Number Seventeen Twenty, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Repealing, repeal, our Bill Number Seventeen Twenty, repealing Fire Resource Truck Agreement, an ordinance repealing Ordinance Number Nine Two Eight Dash Zero Three, Bill Number Ten Twenty-nine, in relation to the Resource Truck Agreement between the City of Fulton and the Fire Department and Local Fire Protection District, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Seventeen Twenty at this council meeting.
Mr. Henchy, it's an ordinance?
Excuse me, sorry. I make a motion to place Bill Number Seventeen Twenty on the second reading of the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Well, just a minute, second. This is a agreement that happens sometimes, these things will come up, and we're still gonna have the equipment to properly get on the air and build up, and to properly have a, have a, have a.
Yeah, so this resource truck has been in the county for a while. The Chiefs Association has been paying insurance and all this stuff on it and upkeep, and we haven't used the resource truck, so each of the departments during our meeting last month discussed it. We will keep the, the material, because it's used for hazardous materials, so we would keep all of those resources, and the truck would just go back to the Missouri Department of Conservation, because it was a kind of a loner-type deal.
Do we have any questions? All in favor of Bill Seventeen Twenty, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance, Bill Number Seventeen Twenty-one. The tax rate, the tax rate's not going to change, it'll be the same as you've read here, I'm sure, in twenty twenty-four as it was in twenty twenty-three. And we'll have a public hearing at the next meeting, but I'd like to go ahead and have the first reading tonight, and then we can go from there.
Okay, Bill Number Seventeen Twenty, Seventeen Twenty-one, Ordinance Number Blank, Twenty Twenty-four Tax Rate Levy. An ordinance fixing the tax rate and levying taxes for the calendar year of twenty twenty-four on all taxable property in the City of Fulton at zero point five two seven one dollars for each one hundred dollars of the assessed valuation of said property and establishing effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number Seventeen Twenty-one for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Very good. Do we have any further discussion on this?
Just a question, being this late in the year, is this truly the twenty twenty-four tax rate? Or are we really setting it for twenty twenty-five?
This will be from this year?
Yeah, last year's ordinance stated that it was twenty-three, so that would be what we received from the clerk.
We name it based on when we, when we start it, not necessarily the entire year. I see that it has to be in place by September one.
For the year twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry. It states from the county clerk's office, it's for the year twenty twenty-four, as shown on the assessment list, plus railroad and utility valuations, as reported by the State Tax Commission.
Okay, it just seems like this would be something we would do earlier in the calendar year if we're setting it for the calendar year, but I don't fully understand all the deadlines and everything.
Yeah, the county clerk sends out her assessed valuation at the end of September after the assessor closes out his tax books, and everybody has reported in March when they do, and then that's when we're assessed.
And then we pay our taxes for twenty-four. Gotcha. I'm with you now. We're not paying them for twenty-five, we're paying them for twenty-four. Thank you, I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the discussion.
Okay, any further questions? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Bill passes. Yeah. We'll do the next one. Councilwoman Reclu, would you read Bill Number Seventeen Twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number Seventeen Twenty-two, Willow Creek South Plat One, final. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to approve the final plat for Willow Creek South Plat, Plat One. I make a motion to move Bill Number Seventeen Twenty-two to our, to next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made, second. Do we have questions?
The only question, Mr. Mayor, I mean, the only question I would have is, you know, it looks like the streets are fifty feet wide, fifty-one feet wide, so they're adequate for, we won't have to have only parking on one side or anything like that, right? Yeah.
So there will be parking restricted to only one side. The streets are gonna be about thirty foot wide, and I think you're probably looking at the right-of-way at fifty foot, but streets will be restricted to one-sided parking.
It looks like it says fifty here.
The streets will be, I can review that with you later and.
Okay, thank you.
So this meets our standard?
It meets what was, what was accepted by the city council.
That's what we accepted for one-sided parking.
For one side of parking, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions, all in favor of Bill Seventeen Twenty-two, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? All right, we'll move on to second reading. Councilman Luther, would you read Bill Number Seventeen Fourteen, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number Seventeen Fourteen, amended Grand Avenue enactment of stop sign. An ordinance amending Section One Ten, Tag Two Eighty-three, stop signs and yield signs, Fulton City Code by removing certain yield signs, enacting stop signs in their place, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number Seventeen Fourteen for, where'd I go? Lost my place. For third reading at this council meeting.
Second.
Very well. These are all, most of the next two or three here we've discussed already. Does anyone have any discussion on them? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Councilman Combs, would you read Bill Number Seventeen Fifteen, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Luther, would you read that for a third time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number Seventeen Fourteen, amended Grand Avenue enactment of stop sign. An ordinance amending Section One Ten, Tag Two Eighty-three, stop signs and yield signs, Fulton City Code by removing certain yield signs, enacting stop signs in their place, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number Seventeen Fourteen for final passage at this council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Eight council members have a affirmative.
Thank you. Now, Councilman Combs, would you read Bill Number Seventeen Fifteen for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number Seventeen Fifteen, amended parking on St. Louis Avenue prohibited or limited. An ordinance amending Chapter One Ten, Traffic and Vehicles, Section One Ten Dash Three Forty, parking on certain streets prohibited or limited. Fulton City Code by prohibiting stopping, standing, and parking on portions of St. Louis Avenue, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number Seventeen Fifteen for final passage at this meeting.
Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Councilman, would you read that again for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number Seventeen Fifteen, amended parking on St. Louis Avenue prohibited or limited. An ordinance amending Chapter One Ten, Traffic and Vehicles, Section One Ten Dash Three Forty, parking on certain streets prohibited or limited. Fulton City Code by prohibiting stopping, standing, and parking on portions of St. Louis Avenue, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to pass Bill Seventeen Fifteen at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very well, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you read, do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Thank you all.
We liven it up a little bit. Councilman Washington, would you read Bill Number Seventeen Sixteen for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number Seventeen Sixteen, amending parking on Monroe and West Thirteenth Street, prohibiting or limiting. An ordinance amending Chapter One, Chapter One Ten, Traffic and Vehicle, Section One Ten Three Dash Three Forty, parking on certain streets prohibited or limited. Fulton City Code by prohibiting stopping, standing, and parking on portions of Monroe Street and West Thirteenth Street, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we place Bill Number Seventeen Sixteen for third reading at this council meeting and for final passage.
Second.
Very well. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Councilman Washington, would you read that again for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number, Bill Number, Bill Number 1716, an ordinance amending chapter 110, traffic and vehicle, section 110-340, parking on certain streets prohibited, unlimited, and Fulton City Code, by prohibiting stopping, standing, and parking on portions of Monroe Street and West 13th Street, and establishing effective date. I make a motion that we pass Bill Number 1716 on tonight's for final passage.
Second.
Very well. All in favor of Bill, no, third reading? Yeah, 1716. Please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Kind of afraid to. Ms. Nelson? Mr. Recle?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yep.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
And Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Thank you, eight councilmen.
Thank you. Councilman Henchy, would you read Bill Number 1718 for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1718, FAA agreement to provide flight inspection of runway 1836, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute all necessary documents in relation to agreement Alpha Juliet Foxtrot-Oscar November-Alfa Alpha Charlie-24-Alfa Charlie-00636523 with the Federal Aviation Administration, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1718 for the third reading at this council meeting.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Councilman Henchy, would you please read that again for us, then?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1718, FAA agreement to provide flight inspection of runway 1836, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute all necessary documents in relation to agreement Alpha Juliet Foxtrot-Oscar November-Alfa Alpha Charlie-24-Alfa Charlie-006523 with Federal Aviation Administration, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Number 1718 for final passage at this council meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Recle?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yep.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
And Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight councilmembers, all excited and affirmative again.
Okay, we have announcements, next council meeting will be August 27th, and to remind everyone, September 24th, we will not have a council meeting. And I hope you all will be at the Bubbles Friday, and what time is that? 11 to 1, okay? That's always a good time, and you can have a hot dog, I think, too. We do not have a need for an executive session tonight, so that being said, I will...
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you all for coming tonight.
Wait, aren't we going to vote on that?
Do you want to call a vote, to see if anybody wanted to stay?
To adjourn? All in favor?
You betcha.
They never vote no on that one. Oppose?